I will call the Londonderry Planning Board meeting to order for November 1st, 2023. All Saints' Day. Big celebration in the, well, not a celebration, but holiday in Europe. I guess other places around the, around the world. I just want to point out for our audience and the board members and everyone who are here, this room has two exits. There are the right-hand side of the room, at the front of the room, and the back of the room. If we need to evacuate for any reason, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you. Go outside, move away from the building, and don't come back in, as our fire officials have instructed us to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and pledge allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Jake is not here tonight, so I'll appoint Tony to vote for Jake. We have six regular members. Ted's not here. Bruce is not here. Johnny is here, our ex-officio. And we have seven voting members. That is more than a quorum, and we have enough, and we can proceed with the meeting tonight. First of all, the meeting is administrative board work. We get our, where we get our work done. And we have no old business. We have new plans. There is actually one that's a site plan, and the other is a conditional use permit that goes with that site plan. So they'll proceed with administrative board work. We have four sets of minutes that we need to approve, and if no one has a question on them, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of September 6th, 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Al.
Second.
Johnny. I do it from down there, so. Johnny, seconds. Any discussion by the board on the minutes of September 6th? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative, and the minutes of September 6th are adopted by this board. Okay, September 13th?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will motion second by Gianni. Any discussion by the board on those minutes of September 13th? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative. And minutes, motion carries, the minutes of September 13th, 2023, have been accepted. Minutes of October 4th, 2023, any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by, I'll second by Gianni. Any questions, any discussion? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Stain.
And abstains. And chair votes affirmative, and the minutes of October 4th, 2023 are approved. Last is the minutes of October 11th, 2023. That was a one-pager, so.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second by Gianni. And.
I have a question about the.
Okay, Anne has a que, okay, Anne.
It says at the end, Member Al Sepeck made a motion to adjourn at 9:35, and then the meeting was adjourned at approximately 7:04.
Okay, good eyes, Anne. You picked, that got by me. I'm not perfect.
That's okay, because I know it was a short meeting. The second one, on the 11th, October.
Do you know the line?
Yeah, it's on.
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, and then seventy-three.
Thank you.
Okay, so the minutes have been amended, so. And I think, is everyone agreement with the amendments?
Yes.
Okay, so one abstention, chair votes affirmative, and the minutes of October 11th, 2023 are accepted as amended. Thank you, Anne. Okay, we have two regional impact determinations. Kelly will explain those to.
Just one administrative question before we move on. So I can't sign this then, right, until we get it?
Once we get the final one, amended one done.
Yes, I'll have to update that.
No problem.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you have two regional impact determinations this evening. I'll discuss them both at the same time because they're in close proximity, and I have the same recommendation on both for the same reasons. The first is for 60 Pettingill Road, which is an application for 175,000 square foot high cube warehouse. The second is for Six and Eight Roundstone, which is actually two warehouses, one of which is 114,000 square feet, and the other is 104,000 square feet. Both of these projects, staff is recommending we treat in the same manner that we did New Balance, given the proximity to the municipal boundary, that being Manchester Bedford area, and then the potential for triggering over 500 vehicle trips. Those are two criteria within the regional impact determination process that we follow. And so staff is recommending the board consider these two projects potential regional impact. So just as a reminder, what that means is we'll start the process of notifying the abutting communities to these two parcels, as well as involve the Regional Planning Commission for them to review and consider whether or not they want to weigh in on the potential regional impact of these two projects.
Okay. Board have any questions?
I have a question on the 500. So a 200,000 square foot high cube is gonna, is gonna generate 500 trips per day or more?
So I don't have the final number yet, but there's a potential for that.
It seems like a lot for a warehouse.
It's probably high, but I'm choosing to err on the side of caution.
Okay.
That and the proximity to the municipal boundary.
Understood. Yeah, I was just, just from my own head, I was just trying to.
I'll add too that historically, we've handled other projects in this area on Pettingill Road in the same manner, just.
Fine.
Given the level of development on Pettingill Road right now, and what we can see coming down the pipeline, we're choosing to notify the abutting communities.
Understood. I was just trying to get it in my head that didn't make sense in the way, the way I calculate things, but thank you.
Yeah, so it's always good to have the input from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. You know, I think there's a regional, could be regional traffic impacts, and they manage the traffic.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not arguing with the decision.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to make the numbers make sense, and I got my answer. We're good.
Yes, good. Okay, I'll, I'll take a, well, we could combine them in one motion, probably, two different locate, well, we'll do, we'll do it separately, two, two motions, one for one address, one for the other.
Mr. Chairman, for the first one, make a motion that it is of regional impact.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. A further discussion by the board.
So do we want to make sure we add the map and lot on that, rather than just the first one?
Okay.
Are you all set?
If you'd like to include what's written on the memo, the application for design review of site plans to construct 175,000 square foot high cube warehouse, 60 Pettingill Road, Gateway Business District. Yes?
Yes, please.
You got it out before I got to the thing here. Okay, that's the motion, second by Jeff. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and motion carries that is of regional impact, and we'll do the second one. Maybe you can, what's the address and everything on that?
So, application for design review of a site plan to construct two high cube warehouses sized 114, 400,000 square feet, and 104, 500,000 square feet, Six and Eight Roundstone Drive, map 28 lots 15 and 16, in the Gateway Business District.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that it does meet the standard for regional impact.
I have a second.
Second.
Second by Anne. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative, and motion carries, this is Roundtree Drive. Next we'll go to discussions of town staff. Anything, Ben?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
No words of wisdom for us? Okay, Kelly, I know we have two extension requests, and we have a lot line merger. I'll let you.
Sure, so the notice of merger that you have in front of you for signature is for 215, 217 Rockingham Road, which the board has already approved. The two extension requests, the first is for 13-page road, that's the site plan that the board has already approved. The extension request is a 120-day request, which brings us to March 8th, 2024.
Okay, we'll do the, I just forgot it. Why don't you repeat it for me, Kelly?
The extension request?
Yes.
Is for the 13-page road site plan.
Okay.
And it's a 120-day extension request, which brings us to March 8th, 2024.
And I will recuse from that one, because it's, I'm gonna butter to it.
Okay, I'll let the record show that Jenny Varani has stepped down from the extension request for 13-page road. Our board have any questions? If not.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension request for 13-page road until March 8th, 2024.
Motion by Al. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and this is six votes, because Gianni Varani has recused himself from the discussion on this.
The second extension request I have is for the Patori site plan. It's a 60-day extension request, which brings us to December 30th, 2023.
Okay, the board have any, any questions?
What's the address on that?
Uh.
It's map 13 lot 99.
It's about on the dairy line.
Okay.
Okay.
Make a motion to grant the extension for the Patori project until, what's the date? December?
December 30th.
December 30th, 2023.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion made in second for the extension for Patori Brothers to December 30th, 2023. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and Patori has a extension to the 30th of December of 2023. Thank you for, for attending. Okay, next, we're gonna go for, I'll read both of these into the record. Oh, lot line merger. What I need is a motion for the chair to sign the lot line merger.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Al. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board?
That one's, that one's our property, so I'm gonna recuse myself from.
Okay. Let the record show that Johnny Varani has recused himself from discussion on this lot line adjustment, and we'll have six voting members. No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the chair will sign the lot line adjustment. And let the record show Gianni Varani has returned to the board. We'll go to our new, new plans. I'll read both of these, because these both will be taken up together. We have a public hearing for an application for a conditional use permit to construct an automobile dealership facility and associated site improvements with 5,450 square feet of wetland impact, and 17,600 square feet of wetland buffer impacts. 36 Industrial Drive, tax map 28, lot 18-3, Zone Gateway Business District. Scannell Properties is the applicant, and Ballinger Properties LLC, and Five N Associates GP are the owners. And the second one here is a public hearing on an application for formal review for a site plan to construct a 50,180 square foot building containing offices, sales area, and service bays for an automobile dealership facility along with associated site improvements. This is a 36 Industrial Drive, tax map 28, lot 18-3, Zone Gateway Business District. Scannell Properties is the applicant, and Ballinger Properties LLC, and Five N Associates GP are the owners. And what we need to do first is determine completeness of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no outstanding checklist items, and staff is recommending the board vote to accept the application as complete.
Do I have a motion for completeness?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion for completeness.
Motion by Al.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion on completeness by the board? Sing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative. Motion carries, the application accepted as complete. This starts the public hearing, presentation, and also the 65-day timeframe in which this board has to render a decision, so. Gentlemen, just introduce yourself for our records, please. I know we have familiar faces, so.
You bet. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a professional engineer with the firm Hayner Swanson, Inc., doing business at 3 Congress Street in Nashua, New Hampshire, and with me tonight is my client, Leo Layton is with Scannell Properties. Leo is a senior project coordinator?
Senior Development Associate.
Senior Development Associate with Scannell. Leo joins us from Minneapolis, Minnesota this evening, so.
Welcome. Thank you.
So it's just right into the record, we are seeking both site plan and conditional use permit for a piece of property located in the northwest corner of Londonderry. With the chair's permission, I'll present the facts of, of the project and the submitted materials, and then I'll probably end up, Mr. Chairman, addressing the requirements of the conditional use permit towards the end of the presentation. Of course, both Leo and myself are here to answer any questions, and in advance, I thank Kelly and Ben for helping me scroll through the, scroll through the graphics. This is property that's located at the corner of Pettingill Road and Industrial Drive. It is, proper address is 36 Industrial Drive. It's an 8.3-acre property located in the Gateway Business Zone. Director Butters to the north is the Kluber Facility. We have Industrial Drive to the east, Pettingill Road to the south, and undeveloped land to the west. And that intersection you see on the graphic is for Pettingill Road and Industrial Drive. It's a very visible site. It's formerly part of the sand and gravel removal operation that existed there for many years. The site contains a combination of scrubby growth and open areas, as you can see on the aerial. With regard to topography, there's about a 25-foot grade change from, I never get this right, yeah, from the industrial Pettingill Road, grade change back into the northwest corner of the site. We had performed a number of test pits and borings on the property, and predominantly they're, they're sandy soils, as, as much of that area is. We had wetlands flagged in accordance with local, state, and federal criteria by GOV Environmental Services. What they found and what's represented in the maps is an old drainage ditch that really runs kind of through the center of the site and into here, right along our westerly property, a, a more traditional New England wetland that flows offsite in a northwesterly direction. Kelly, if you could be kind enough to scroll the screen. So we have filed a site plan application for just over a 50,000-square-foot automobile service and sales facility and accompanying site improvements. The proposal is intended to be a new facility for Tesla. If approved, it would be their first such facility here in the state of New Hampshire. Board members, I'd like to have you recall that two variances were obtained for this project in this zone. The first was to allow vehicle sales in the GB zoning district, and secondly, to allow vehicle services greater than 10,000 square feet in the GB zoning district. Both those variances, sir, were obtained by the Londonderry Zoning Board of Adjustment. Some key elements to the site, in fact, I think, Kelly, if you scroll one more plane, we'll get a little larger view. Thank you. Some key elements to the site, you can see the bin, the building center located on the facility. We know that Tesla is a world-recognized brand that produces electric vehicles. Inside this facility, there'll be a small showroom. As I understand Tesla's operation, most of the vehicles are built online and ordered online. There's a very small showroom area within the building. There's a parts department, and there's service bays and lifts within the building. The service work to be done, because it's not a combustion engineering, includes but is not limited to tire replacement, tire balancing, alignment, minor bodywork, and occasional battery replacement. Most services are handled in a one- or two-hour period, so a lot of the people drive their vehicle there, they may sit and have a cup of coffee while the vehicle is serviced and then leave, but loaner vehicles can be provided. Facility plans on servicing about 75 vehicles per business day, and they intend, they intend to employ about 35 people. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and they have Sunday hours for sales only, not for service in the facility. So be a couple employees there on Sunday. Access to the site is a single access point located in the north-estherly corner of the site, and it is off of Industrial Drive. It's both an in and an out. We have parking proposed for 285 vehicles. And auto dealerships are unlike office buildings or retail stores, where you have employees and customers here. You know, a dealership will have visitors, they'll have employees, they'll have vehicle storage, they will have vehicle display. They will have somebody drop off a vehicle to get serviced, they'll have their friend come pick them up, and they'll be in a parking spot for a few minutes and then leave. So it's, it's a facility that, that requires to meet the program, 285 spaces. Because of the elevation change, Mr. Chairman, that I described earlier, we're proposing a retaining wall along the northerly and westerly side in order to create this rectangular development pad for the property. With regard to stormwater, we hope to capture our surface runoff using curving and catch basins. We're proposing to outlet into two practices, oops, I'm sorry, Kelly, I think I hit the wrong button, I apologize. Two practices, one in the northwesterly corner here, a surface practice, and then a second here in the southwesterly practice. And those stormwater areas will include four bays that'll include areas for storage and detention, with eventually an outlet into the wooded area adjacent to the wetland that I previously described. Our stormwater system has been thoroughly evaluated through both the town and the state. We've obtained our New Hampshire DES Alteration of Terrain Permit. We do have a wetland impact. You'll see that it's in green, located. That's that old drainage ditch that I mentioned that runs through the site. It currently does not carry flow, but it met the definition of a wetland, just over 5,000 square feet. And then we have impact to the, to the buffer of the wetland to the west for construction of this facility. A majority of that buffer impact is an area that was already disturbed as part of the sand and gravel operation. We did meet with the Conservation Commission, and I will be happy to, later in the presentation, give you a quick report on their comments and how we addressed their, their comments. Snow review, removal for dealerships are challenging, because a lot of times there's vehicles in the yard. We have really ample opportunity on the east side of the site, and the south side of the site for snow storage, which we've identified on the plan, but there's a strong likelihood that as the site meets its capacity, that snow will need to be exported from the site in a legal manner. And we've got a pretty thorough note on sheet one of our plan set that, that discusses snow and snow removal, how excess snow should be discharged from the property. A traffic report, Mr. Chairman, was part of our, our prac, our, our submittal effort. Our consultant, who could not be here this evening, estimated trips generated by the project. The report concluded that, you know, the project is really a minor traffic generator of 35 employees, only 75 vehicle service during the day, and they concluded that adequate capacity exists.
What are the hours of operations?
Yes, so the hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. So the early arrivals tend to be in advance of the a.m. peak hour out on Pettingill Road, but it's more of a steady stream, I would say, sir, over the course of the day, rather than a, you know, a peak during the a.m. and the p.m. peak, correct. Moving along, our plan set includes lighting plans, combination of light poles and wall packs. Everything is LED lighting, cutoff lumineers, downcast lighting, 25-foot high poles, no, no spillover onto any abutting property. Landscaping, Kelly, if you could move to the next plan. The focus was really on, on landscaping along industrial and Pettingill Roads, as you can see, including deep purple lilacs, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We have a combination of, of ground cover, of manicured lawn on the, you know, along the road frontages, and then back behind the wall and in the stormwater areas, it'll be more naturalized with a, with a conservation mix in those locations. We have an open space requirement of 25%. This zone, the project proposes 48%. Kelly, next slide, please. We did include some building plans that I'd like to quickly go through. The building itself is a flat roof parapet in the front. The exterior materials are metal panels, fixed glass windows at the entry, tilt-up concrete panels across the back and sides of the building. The color schemes will be Tesla branding, light and dark gray with red accent strips. You'll see a little bit of the signage in the front. We have a ground sign at our main entrance off of Industrial Drive, and we have several directional and wayfinding, wayfinding signs in the site. The building itself, we're allowed 100 square feet. We have a 70-foot, I'm sorry, 70-square-foot Tesla verbiage, and then in the left corner, you can see the Tesla symbol measuring 30 square feet. Construction schedule, sir? We hope to break ground in the winter of 2024. Should take about 10 months to construct, so the, the goal would be to open about this time next year. I'd like to just move into conditional use permit, if I may. The, yeah, okay, so a couple more graphics, thank you. The, you can see there, oh, Kelly, if you go back, yeah, you can see the graphics. We had some perspectives done, I think they were very attractive. You can see the landscaping on the, on the south and the east side of the building, and that's a, that's a very nice graphic to have. If we could go back to the site plan, please? So part of our application is a conditional use permit request, and I'll, I'll somewhat paraphrase, Mr. Chairman, our, how we meet those requirements. As mentioned, two areas of impact, slightly over 5,000 square foot impact in green, and then a yellow impact to the buffer to the west of approximately 18,000 square feet. As part of the design review process, we met with the Conservation Commission. My notes reflected they had really four comments they would like us to address. First, they asked to have no snow removal over the wall. In other words, no discharge of snow from a front loader or anything that would push snow over this wall and into the stormwater areas or the wetland area, and we certainly agreed to that, and there's a note reflecting that on the plan. The second is affirmation that there be no parking spaces in, in the buffer area, in that yellow area. yellow area. The third thing they asked us to do is revegetate that buffer area where it's disturbed here, next to the wetland itself. We went back to our landscape architect, and they have added to the landscape plan 52 shrubs in those locations and 52 trees in those locations. So, 104 total species in an attempt to revegetate that buffer along that existing wetland. And then lastly, they asked us to reduce impacts to the west. In fact, when we appeared before them, this wall on the west side is actually pushed over and had impacted the tip of this wetland here. We shifted, we went back to the drawing board, shifted everything over six feet to keep out of that wetland. So, we eliminated one of the wetland impacts on the wetland to the west. The London Area CUP Section 4.6.1.4 asks us to address four points. For brevity's sake, Mr. Chairman, I'll work through those four points, and our response is included in our application. The proposed construction is essential to the productive use of the land, not within the CO district. You know, clearly, this old ditch, dry wetland located in the center of our property is in a very difficult location for this or any development upon the site. Being able to impact that area allows full development of this property. The second comment, the second requirement, is that we've tried to minimize impacts to the wetlands. I think our response is twofold. First, you know, this retaining wall is a pretty significant wall. It goes from zero feet of reveal to probably 18 feet in the corner, back down to zero. So, it's a very sizable retaining wall. And that was done so that the land didn't slope off and create an impact along the westerly property line. So, Skanel's gone to significant measures to create a functional development pad, but also minimize the more important wetland resource, which is that to the west. And then, secondly, the minor adjustment we made at the request of the Conservation Commission. The third point is no feasible alternative exists in terms of amending the design to be less of an impact. Again, the wetland in the green is such that it's right in the center. No matter what gets developed here would likely impact that. We're bordered by a public road to the south and to the east, so it really prevents us from completely shifting out of that buffer area to the west. If we weren't able to do that, then this site would not meet this particular program. Lastly, economic advantage is not the sole reason. I think the reason this site was selected, much like some of the other uses in this part of London area, is its central location to the state of New Hampshire. And by developing this site, it will give Tesla clients the ability to have their vehicles located in a very central location. In summary, Mr. Chairman, it's our client's opinion, our opinion, that the plan set has been prepared in accordance with your regulations and good planning practices. Tesla is a well-recognized global business seeking to construct their first facility here in New Hampshire. They've incorporated many of their branded elements into their building and signage design. We have received a favorable recommendation from the Heritage Commission when we appeared before them. The staff conditions that Kelly and her team put together are acceptable to us, and hopefully Tesla, they're excited to be here in London area. So, with that, I'm happy to take a pause, answer any questions. We have asked for some waivers, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure we'll get them through the normal course of the evening, and I'm prepared to discuss them at length at your desire. So, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. We'll do, we'll go to staff for input first, through the board, and then to the public. Any abutters or any interested individual that has questions? So, I'll start with Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, there are a number of waivers associated with the application. I'm not sure if you prefer the applicant walk you through them, or would you like me to quickly run through them?
You can quickly run through them. I think we're...
I will reference these sections in the staff's recommendation. If you have any questions, just let me know. The first is for Section 4.5.2.E2, which is relating to the Transportation Demand Management and Sustainable Site and Building Design. The applicant has provided the required justification from these standards, and staff is supportive of this waiver. The second waiver request is from the Site Plan Regulations Sections 3.09, Point K, Point 2I, and I2, relating to structural sections of parking lots. Staff is supportive of this waiver. Third is the Site Plan Regulations Sections 3.10G1, relating to interior landscaping within the front parking area. Again, staff supports this waiver. Next is Section 3.10G1, relating to interior landscaping for the side parking area, of which staff supports. The fifth waiver is Section 3.10G3, again, relating to interior landscaping, of which staff supports. Next is Section 310G5, relating to the perimeter parking lot landscaping, which staff is supportive of. The seventh waiver is Section 412C19, relating to locating and mapping trees that are greater than 15 inches in diameter. Staff supports this waiver request. The eighth waiver is Section 4.14A19-2, relating to rim and invert elevations of existing drainage systems. Staff is supportive of that waiver. The next is more of an exception. This is something the board sees frequently. It's relating to driveway widths. The way the regulation is written is it states that the board has the ability to grant an exception up to 36 feet wide for a driveway that exceeds 24 feet. And that's relating to Section 3.08B6 of the Site Plan Regulations.
And what is theirs gonna be?
36.
Theirs gonna be 36?
So, the board has the ability to grant that exception. That's it?
That's it for the waivers, yep.
That's it for waivers. Relating to the conditional use permit, the applicant did a great job summarizing the Conservation Commission comments. The Commission was supportive of the CUP, provided that those comments were addressed, and I believe that that was done. So, staff would recommend that the board approve the conditional use permit. And then relating to the application overall, you'll see in the staff memo, there are several engineering-related items, all of which staff believes can be addressed as conditions of approval, and so we would support a conditional approval of the application.
Okay. Anything to add at all, Ben?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks. We'll go to the board. I'll start with Ann. We'll work our way through, and then we'll go to the public. So, Ann?
I think you've addressed any questions I had on the left side of the project. But I did have one question about the handicap parking. It's not adjacent to the building. It's on the outer edge of the parking lot. Why is that? I've never seen that. Usually, they're, you know, right up next to the building.
Yeah, very good question.
Just because I'd hate to see, you know, somebody who has needs walk across the parking lot where there's traffic.
That's a very good question. I believe that the short answer is that we're meeting Tesla's program. But I would also say to you that I think that's a fair comment, and I think that we would like to maybe revisit that with our team if we can get a couple of those spaces up closer to the building. I actually think that's a good comment. One of the things we struggle with is there's always a little tug-of-war between an architect and an engineer where he doesn't like the bollards and the handicap signs as you're looking at that wonderful building elevation, you know.
So, you're saying it's visuals?
The visuals of that. So, there's a little bit of balance there, and I think that's why they're across the lane. But I think to add too closer to the building is a fair comment.
Even if it's on the left side, you know, not under this Tesla sign or whatever.
Yes, correct.
But there's an access point there. That would be fair. Because I've seen it split, a couple next to the building and a couple in other places on the outside of that.
I think we can make that as part of our kind of final wrap-up with the project. Sure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'll say, Ann?
Yeah, I'm all set, thanks. It's a beautiful building. Again, last time you all were here, I said thank you for choosing London area, and I'd like to say that again. And the can of worms with the handicap, as far as I'm concerned, if it meets the ADA requirement, I'm all set with it as written. If it isn't, you're gonna have to make a change anyway, because you're gonna get bagged on it anyway. So, whatever the ADA says is fine with me.
Johnny?
No, I thought it was a great presentation. I don't have any additional questions.
Jeff?
Same. I'm good.
So, I have a few questions. So, my first one is on parking, and, you know, it's unique for automobile dealership, the parking requirements. How does the requirements here compare to other Tesla dealerships that you've worked with, you know, the locations?
As far as, you know, the requirements for...
The number of cars, you know, you're storing new cars, you're repairing cars.
You know, they've gone into a decent amount of existing buildings where they kind of just have to work with, you know, the constraints that that brings. With this prototype, where they're doing more ground-up developments, they try and meet, you know, these parking requirements, which I think we've reduced below what their typical, you know, threshold is. But it's around that 300 parks for a building of this size.
If I may add to it, one of the early comments, and I think it was either through Heritage or even Conservation Commission, is wow, you've got a lot of parking. What can you do about it? And I think we were about 305 that evening, and we're down to 285. So, we've made some movement that way. Your code requires about 210 spaces, so we've closed that gap. I just finished doing a Porsche dealership in Nashua, fully designed project that has yet to start construction, and it's about the same size, you know? It's about 300 cars. And I've had the good fortune of doing a number of dealerships over the years. The worst ones are the ones that don't have enough parking. And if you've ever been to Automotive Village in Nashua, New Hampshire, that street is not good. I mean, there's just way too many cars, so.
Okay, and I assume it's gonna be Tesla cars only? There're gonna be service there?
Correct, yeah.
And no other EVs, EV brands or anything like that?
No.
And this may sound like a stupid question, but there's no accommodation for gasoline storage or waste oil or anything like that required?
No, and, you know, that was one of the conditions of the variances we received was that, you know, the building would be specific to electric vehicles.
Are there any accommodations that had to be taken for the batteries, storage of the batteries, or, you know, discarded batteries, anything like that?
Yeah, so when a battery replacement needs to happen, they'll order the new battery. When the new battery comes, they'll take out the damaged battery, replace it with a new battery, and then ship the damaged battery offsite.
Okay. Okay, good.
There's a small storage area within the building, but those batteries generally don't get stored, they don't store 20 of them and then have a guy come. They're usually that day or the next day, as I understand it. Correct? Yeah.
It's probably the same case with the discarded batteries. You don't store those for a period of time until you have a truckload or anything like that?
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm all set.
Marge?
Think it looks good. I am worried about battery storage, having seen several fires on batteries burning on cars on the side of the road recently.
Yeah.
And yes, I worked in car business for a while. You need more space than you actually have. If you do any kind of business at all, it gets difficult.
Right, thank you, right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Much better than what looks there now.
Thank you. How many EV recharge stations?
Eight, eight, sir, yeah. They're located over, if you could go to the next drawing, Kelly, please, thank you. They're located over right along the side of the building, eight charging positions here. And one thing I'd like to discuss, the board has the ability to widen from 24 feet to 36. And the reason we need that added width, just for kind of ease to get in, ease to get in and out. Yeah, here we go. But that's how we've kind of spun our fire department vehicle through the site, and there's plenty of turning movement for that. They do receive vehicles on a flatbed, and that motion is to come in here, come around in the back of the building. You can see how we've rounded our islands in the back to accommodate that move, and vehicles will be offloaded in this location here, and then, so they're not weaving their way through the front of the site, so.
EV stations are 24/7 all the time?
I think they're just for Tesla customers for their vehicles, correct?
Yeah, so those are actually off-network. So, you know, someone looking to charge any electric vehicle, they'll pull up, you know, whatever the app is, and it'll show the chargers on network, and they'll go to those chargers. These are specific to, you know, vehicles being serviced and making sure they're fully charged before customer picks them up.
And then Tesla does the policing of who uses the recharge stations and...
Right, yeah.
I've heard of, like, people waiting for recharging cars, that fights will break out and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, that will be on Tesla to make sure those are...
It's Tesla's responsibility to keep the domestic tranquility there.
Right, yeah, and I guess, you know, us as the landlord as well, so.
Skanel, who Leo is with, will own the facility. They will lease it to Tesla. Skanel also owns the facility across the street of the FedEx Ground facility. So, they're 10 years later back in London area.
Keep a close eye on that. Okay.
Thank you.
It's definitely a welcome addition to London area, the area also. Any abutters or anyone for the public? Any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to this site plan and conditional use permit? Anything to add to the conditional use permit at all, Marge? You're all set.
I've read exactly what we wrote.
Okay, very good. Bring it back to the board. We have the waivers to do, we have a conditional use permit, and we have the plan itself.
Mr. Chairman?
What, we got nine, nine waivers?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm gonna make motions individually on each of these.
Okay.
Like to make a motion to grant waiver number one, justification being it would result in peculiar and exceptional, practical difficulties are exceptional, and undue hardship upon the owner of the affected property.
Okay, I have a motion by Al, who I'm gonna second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion? Sing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions, she votes affirmative, and that waiver has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number two, the justification being an alternative site planning and building design approach meet the design objectives as stated in the regulations equally well or better than would compliance with the regulations.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
By Al, and second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions, and chair votes affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number three, with the justification that it would result in peculiar and exceptional, practical difficulties are exceptional, and undue hardship upon the owner of the affected property.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions, and chair votes affirmative. And the third waiver has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number four, with the justification... Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number four. With the justification it would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner of the affected property.
Motion by Al.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative, and waiver four has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number five. With the justification that an alternative site planning and building design approach meets the design objectives as stated in the regulations equally well or better than would compliance with the regulations.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that.
Okay. Motion by Al, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative, and waiver number five has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number six. With the justification that it would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner of the affected property.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that, please.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative, and waiver six has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number seven. With the justification an alternative site planning and building design approach meets the design objectives as stated in the regulations equally well or better than would compliance with the regulations.
Motion by Al.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative, and waiver number seven has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant waiver number eight. Justification in either of the foregoing circumstances, the waiver may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion by Al, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative, and waiver eight has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address-
Sorry, could I just interrupt? So, this one, you can just make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that the board make an exception and grant the 36-foot width for the driveway per the regulations.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Al, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative. Thank you, Kelly. And next we have is our conditional use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant approval of the conditional use permit to construct an automobile dealership facility and associated site improvements with 5450 square feet of wetland impacts, 17,850 square feet of wetland buffer impacts, 36 industrial drive, MAP 28, lot 18-3, Zone Gateway Business District, Scannell Properties Applicant, and Ballenger Properties LLC, and Five and Associates, GP, owners.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Motion by Al, second by Lynn for the conditional use permit. Any discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative, and the conditional use permit has been granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of the site plan to construct a 50,180-square-foot building containing offices, sales areas, and service base for an automobile dealership facility, along with associated site improvements, 36 industrial drive, MAP 28, lot 18-3, Zone Gateway Business District, Scannell Properties Applicant, and Ballenger Properties LLC, and Five and Associates, GP, owners, in accordance with plans prepared by Hayner Swanson Incorporated, dated July 14, 2023, last revised October 2, 2023, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of the approval and prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated November 1, 2023.
Okay. Motion by Al for conditional approval?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, are we including the ADA spaces being considered to move closer to the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you consider that?
Yes, I would, yes.
This is what Ann has suggested.
Yep.
And then Lynn is second the amended motion, so amended, so to speak. Any further discussion by the board? Sing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she votes affirmative, and your site plan has conditional approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Well-done plan, beautiful facility. I think you'll be busy.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Joe.
It'll make for a very attractive corner there. Right now, it's gonna be filled with political signs like on previous years, but next year, we'll be looking forward to seeing this building.
Yeah, they have to have permission next year. Okay. Is there any other business? Let's see. Next week, we have a continued lot line adjustment that is up the north part of town. And then Kelly is gonna have some info for us in regards to the PODs we have on Route 102 and Route 28.
I have a question.
Yes.
For Kelly and the new guy. Ben, we had, I said Ben, but he's gonna be the new guy for a while.
Okay.
He's still got that wide-open eye thing on him.
He'll be on his own soon enough.
So, prior to COVID, there was a move, and you and I have talked about it since you come, about the sign ordinance to look at it, maybe have some revisions or whatever. And I'm wondering if that's still in the queue somewhere. And I would again like to offer my services on a volunteer basis for whatever's necessary, research or whatever. But I think it needs to be looked at. I think it's way outdated. And the question is, is it in the queue?
It is in the queue. We've concluded that's going to require outsourcing, in other words, having a consultant be more involved. But to answer your question, it is in the queue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I said a thing on slides to the board. I think it's probably, it was before COVID, from the Municipal Association on signage. It probably is, there probably are some more recent cases, especially ones that hit the US Supreme Court.
Yeah. So, my impetus is coming from the myriad of cases that ZBA is tasked with month after month after month as a result of an outdated sign ordinance. And it just really is a waste of resources and slows down the whole process for citizens that have things that need to be done. So, I just think, you know, when you, just visually and intuitively, when you see a ZBA that has all those cases on one particular thing, I think you have to take a step back and say, why is that happening? And to me, it's obvious that we got some issues with that ordinance. And as Kelly said, it's in the queue, so we're all set.
Yep. Every sign on, I think, 102 is there by variance. They're all different.
Exactly.
But it's been-
It's not gonna be easy. It's gonna be very painful.
Yeah. It's been problematic for a long time. So, if we can get that solved, it would be great. Whether we make everyone happy or not, that's another thing, so.
Out of it.
But also what we have coming, we don't have funds, our sufficient funds at the moment, is the updating of our master plan. So, I think any ideas, I think Kelly and I have discussed it a bit. We might be looking at Southern New Hampshire Planning to be our third-party part of it. But if you want to look at the master plans in Goffstown and the city of Manchester, those were done by Southern New Hampshire Planning, and they're very good plans. I don't recall who Derry used as a consultant or third-party. Derry has just recently, well, probably about three years ago now, updated their master plan. Those are probably three plans to look at. That'll give us ideas of what we need. And I know what Kelly and I have discussed is that one of the prime areas is housing to be dealt with sufficiently in it. And the other is transportation, infrastructure type of thing. That includes water, too, Lynn.
Water, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, infrastructure in general. I would think water, roads-
Water, sewer.
Electricity, sewer. I think all that needs to be addressed, because it's not real strong in the current master plan.
Mr. Chairman, does that have to be budgeted for?
Yes.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not cheap.
The budget is gonna be real tight this year. It was tight last year. It'll be tighter yet, so.
I've been here 42 years. It's never been a good year for a budget. So, it's like a, it's like a one-year miracle. Every March, it's not a good year. It doesn't matter what year it is.
One year where we got money to renew the lawn on the Town Common, drainage and everything. That was a nice window. And it was when the economy was doing good, and we've had our town infrastructure, you know, taken care of. And that was probably one of the last things on the list, was improving the drainage in Town Common and the nice lawn. I think it was updating electrical on it. There's other things to do. Of course, there's a lot of things to do. And whatever we get for freebies, we will take. But there's no budget for anything. Even the tree we wanted to replace, it's not gonna happen. So, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ann. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.